Okay, then the facilities planning and the first one is the Facilities Advisory Committee Final Recommendation. Which do we have?
Okay, hi. I'm gonna get us started today. My name is Patty Parrott. I'm a member of the Facilities Advisory Committee. I am a Cottage Grove resident.
Hello. My name is Joey Alman Miller. I've been a longtime resident of Cottage Grove.
Jason Futchin, resident of Cottage Grove.
So I'm gonna go ahead and get us started tonight and lodge the recommendation from the Facilities Advisory Committee. So first, I just want to very briefly and for the benefit of the new board members and just so that we're all clear, reminder of what the board asked the Facilities Advisory Committee to achieve. Basically, they asked us to take a look at an extensive amount of background data provided on the districts, particularly involving enrollment data and where we were going to run into capacity concerns with our students. They asked us to analyze many facilities options that were passed forward from the previous long-range facilities planning committee, assess costs and tax impacts or whatever decision we would have to determine, obviously, what the impact to the taxpayers of the district would be. From there, they asked us to provide a preliminary recommendation, which we did several months ago prior to conducting a community survey. At that point, a community survey was conducted, taking the data and the feedback from the community from the survey. We have amended our recommendation and that's what we're gonna share with you this evening is our final recommendation to you, the board. Just starting out by saying our committee of 20 believes that we did achieve these goals and we're gonna talk a little bit more about them as we go forward. So tonight, I'm gonna go through what our advisory recommendations are. Joe is going to share a little bit more about the rationale and the why. We've got some other issues that, obviously, we've heard a lot of community feedback both tonight and in the past several weeks and we want to touch on some of these briefly and then, of course, answer any questions that you have of the committee. What we are not going to do tonight, we're not going to review large amounts of background data. I know it was provided to you. It's been made public for our communities to share, but I do want to reassure the board that we have spent time combing through that data and we've worked with a number of expert consultants in this space, both related to current enrollment, future enrollment, the best that we can tell based on the status of different outlets available for building in our different communities, aging populations. We've talked to them about cost considerations, really an expert in every area. So there's an extensive amount of background information that we're not gonna dig into, but please rest assured that that's available. So with that, what is the recommendation? The main question that the board charged our committee to answer was should the district pursue a facilities recommendation? And I am here and, obviously, the letter was a little bit surprising that we just heard because I was at that meeting and it was unanimous consent. We talked a lot about what unanimous consent means, but there was a verbal poll taken and there was no dissent issued in the verbal poll. And what that said is that, yes, the Facilities Advisory Committee recommends that the board pursues a referendum. And you asked us if we did pursue that recommendation. The questions are for you now: when, what dollar amount, what should we use the money for? And what should you, as the board, keep in mind is you make the detailed decisions that will guide our future. And then, conversely, if no, what do we recommend as the next steps? So moving on, yes, we do recommend. We recommend that we move forward quickly. We recommend that we go to referendum in November of this year. And we recommend that that number is $57 million. Joe is gonna get into a little bit more detail about why we came to that number, again, based on some of the expert insights that we gleaned coming off of the community survey. What do we believe that $57 million should pay for? We think there are four areas. The first thing that was driving the bulk of the conversation is the new elementary school that would house grades three through five. And that's on the piece of property that is owned by the district in Cottage Grove. In that section, we do recommend nine sections per grade level. We had extensive discussion about nine versus 10, the capacity numbers and what that means. I don't have the exact capacity numbers in front of me right now, but we believe that the nine section gives us the flexibility within the budget. It also means our enrollment projections to keep us going strong and that's on the board's low-end number of recommended students per classroom. So there's quite a bit of flexibility there. However, we do wanna make it known that we recommend to the board that the school be constructed in a way, as has been suggested, that it is easily expandable so that an additional section could be added for each of those. In addition to the nine sections for three through five, we do recommend to the board keeping in mind with past and with our future growth that could happen, that the core areas in that section that have been discussed, the cafeteria, the gymnasium and shared spaces, be large enough to accommodate future expansion as well. So that school, we believe, based on the data that we've been provided, would cost $30.4 to $33.5 million. In addition, we heard strongly from the community that it prioritized the capital maintenance that we've discussed in the past. We continue to feel that is a very high priority and that has been prioritized at $14.8 million. We believe it's essential that that is part of the $57 million referendum. As we looked at the athletics wants that were listed and needs of the district, the most pressing thing that we have been told by members of the administration, the Activities Council and other members that we've spoken with in the community is the reconstruction of a high school track. So we have prioritized that as a recommendation. If you're going to make an investment in any of our athletics facilities, that's the only thing we believe we can fit into the budget. And that leaves us with high-priority renovation projects, which is listed at $8 to $11.2 million. Now, I wanna explain the range there. Obviously, depending on the price that the school comes in, will let us know how much money is left at the end of the day for the high-priority renovation projects. What does this mean for our taxpayers? Now, we have a chart up here, obviously, the $100,000, we recognize that there aren't many $100,000 properties in our district, however, that's meant to be a multiplier. So per $100,000 of property value, about $2.42 a month are $29. Keep in mind, this is a referendum, a capital request that would be over 20 years. This does not account for any operational referendum that the board would decide, if the board would decide is important. We did not feel it was within our purview to make that decision, so our recommendation is only in terms of the capital referendum. Joe is going to take us through some more additional detail.
So one of the rationales for why November 2018, as Patty mentioned, we looked at the overcapacity, which currently is at three of the five buildings and that it will increase over the next five years. We looked at the concept of the increasing construction and financing costs, which could add up substantially as well. We looked at why would we want to defer any more of our maintenance because we did this from the last time the long-range planning committee came in. They gave us the same list that we're looking at now. Many of the projects were deferred and between the time they gave it to us and we got to see, the price had gone up. And so we discussed that these major maintenance causes can no longer be deferred. It's gonna only get worse over time and have a much larger impact for the property tax bill. The strain on the students and staff doing the overcrowding that we exist now and also going forward is that this was another thing is that, again, if we can resolve some of these critical issues, which we know were happening, that the student overcrowded, especially in Cottage Grove, they needed to be dealt with. And then, again, the deteriorating building. Some of our buildings are now going on over 20 years and while we all think of them, even Taylor Prairie, you know, my children were in elementary school when Taylor Prairie was built. My children were coming out of the school system when Glacial Drummen was built. But I continued, my husband and I, we continued to host international students who were at the high school. And so we were very much involved over the past 20 years with students and people and programs within those school buildings. Why $57 million? And this was discussed extensively between the community members because we had originally thought of like, what would it take to get everybody everything that they wanted? And it was way more than $57 million. It was close to that $82 million. But the survey came back with a strong community support saying $57 million. So when we asked that, give us a little bit more, they came back and said 62% of your respondents, and these respondents were really non-parent and non-staff. These are the people that we had to really think hard to listen to because they most likely will be our voting population if we go to referendum at this point. And so we had to figure out, if we do this referendum now, November 2018, if we put it above $57 million, we were pretty sure it would not pass. So what could we get for $57 million that would solve some of those key areas that we were asked to look at and examine very, very carefully? So the rationale why new elementary school for grades three to five in Cottage Grove because that's where the overcrowding is, is in that population of third to fifth grade. We wanted to place it in Cottage Grove and include the fifth graders in an elementary setting, not just because it's aligning with Winnicott School, but we also heard as a committee that good educational purposes had, for the most part, fifth graders belong in an elementary setting, not mixed in with the middle school. We also recognized you take out that fifth graders and we relieve the overcapacity at Glacial Drummen, as what our earlier members spoke about, having lunch at 10:30 is not optimal. Well, by removing the fifth graders, we no longer will have that same 10:30 lunch time. We may not have, we won't have that overcrowded capacity in the cafeterias and in the lunch lot because the fifth graders will now be in the middle school. It also provides long-term 4K to 8 capacity in the area of the district with rapid enrollment growth. We spent a lot of time trying to figure out and understand these enrollment options and the growth. Personally, I was very skeptical about some of the enrollment growth. And so what I did was I looked at every referendum that came in within the Badger Conference for the last 10 years, what happened in Cottage Grove, not Cottage, Oregon, Sun Prairie, Verona, Wantage Key. How did they get to the point where they could then create a referendum that was accepted by the communities? What did they do? How was this enrollment that they represented 48 years ago? What is it coming out now? Because we know that in between 2008, we had a recession. We weren't gonna see major growth. They didn't see major growth, but they're seeing growth now. Every school superintendent or person on those committees said, we were shocked, just like you were, that there would be growth in our communities because at the time we were looking at it, we were in a recession. We didn't see new houses and stuffs, Joe. We didn't see new businesses coming in, but we are seeing them now. And so they are prepared to handle that growth. If we do nothing here in this district or put it off too much longer, we may not be able to handle our growth as projected without even greater fiscal responsibilities and taxpayer burden. So I believe very strongly that in looking at it as a committee, we became financially responsible. We began to think, what is our community saying? What is the data saying? What is our school district personnel saying? Our teachers, our superintendents? And even hearing back from board members or exchanges personally, I felt that as a committee, we were looking at things that we're financially responsible. Why address the capital maintenance? I said it before, it's $14.8 million in district-wide high-priority capital maintenance is a necessity. We cannot put off repairing boilers. We cannot put off replacing roofs. We cannot put off putting in new windows that will save us energy costs and utility costs. We need to look at some of these things. We also need to fix those things so that we can maximize the lifespans in those current buildings. Now, the rationale for why construct the high school track? The committee didn't feel that we got enough data in detail for it, so at our last meeting, we asked Superintendent Olson, could we hear from Jeff Schreiner? Why was he gonna be recommending the high school track? Why was that going to be their first priority? One of the things that he said is that there are parts of the track that are literally falling apart. It is no longer safe for that person coming down the eighth lane. I remember my daughter and my son running in that eighth lane, coming around that final pole. If I thought is, if they were gonna fall or get hurt playing a sport, okay, that we as a school or as a district should be responsible for every person running on the track, then we better look at it. And the high school track has been in disrepair for many years. Even when my children were there, we just would repave over it and we build it up and then we pave again, while they're now saying that they can't do that anymore. So we reviewed that $14.8 million in potential outdoor facility projects and we came back and said, based on what the athletic director, Jeff Schreiner, says and what Dan Olson told us, to the best of their ability, they felt that for safety reasons and for the fact that putting off rebuilding of the track would not save us any money in the long run, that it would be their recommendation to be the highest priority. And the FAC agreed with that at that point. Why renovate the existing schools? We don't know how much money's gonna be left, but whatever money is left from the referendum if we go out at $57 million is that there certainly are other schools currently that need changes. And we've also asked the architectural firm and the construction firm is that we wanna make sure that these renovations were often be able to handle future modes of teaching, that we would be able to go forward in whether it be lab space or common area space, that they would have to be able to create things that would be expandable, that we would be able to be able to handle growth within those renovations. We would also need to construct a controlled entrance at Winnicott School. No student should ever be afraid to go to school because of safety reasons and we all know why. We have had too many incidences at schools, not only with outsiders coming in, with our own students in. So the ability to construct a control entrance at one of our largest schools, Winnicott, which is 4K through fifth grade, is another reason why we have to do that renovation. We also wanted to make sure that there is improved learning environments. My granddaughter from Japan just came and spent a semester at Winnicott. Her school in Japan is 110 years old. It doesn't change, 32 class desks. So when she came to Winnicott and she learned about learning environments, moving balls, up chairs, desks that were only two, group bean bags, after the first week, she said, Grandma, that's all I want is my desk. That's all I want, my desk and my space. That was the first weekend in September. And she left in December and she went back to Japan. She told her teacher about her new learning environment and she said, we don't all learn the same. We need to be able to change. And even in her little school, her teacher is allowing kids to switch a desk. They don't have balls, but they can switch a desk from front row, back row, left row. To her, that was progress, a learning environment. We need to prioritize what we can accomplish under the $24 million and what we can do completely if we go to a full $57 million referendum.
Go for it.
Go for it.
All right, so I get the items that the FAC talked about. We're leaving in your court and the rationale behind why we're leaving them in your court. You know.
How come that's your job?
I don't know, probably because I've sat over there once before, so I get to help guide you through that process. You know, the initial recommendation came through that the FAC thought that the transition model for a 4KK and then a 1 through 2 and then a 3 through 5 was kind of the way we wanted to go. We had some more discussions on that at our last meeting before we came with our preliminary and it was kind of decided that based on community input, based on chances to hear more from what the administration and others have said, is that there needs to be more dialogue and discussion on that and we decided that that's probably outside of our scope and area of expertise. So we strongly encourage you to get as many faculty members, as many outside sources that you can talk to, community members, you know, there's lots of different things that go into that, boundary lines that have to be drawn, that could have to be drawn numerous times. Is a K to 4K school too small with too many little kids in it? All of those different issues that you're gonna have to face and answer. So we just decided that was up for you guys and we didn't wanna make a formal recommendation on that. One of the other things that people already talked about is the operating referendum. Our charge was to look at the facilities, not necessarily how to pay for it. So, you know, how a school goes and you have to have the staff and team to run it, the operating referendum, you'll have to decide what happens with that. You know, as you guys are aware, it becomes a second ballot question and you'll have to have some discussions at some point on what happens if it doesn't, if one passes and the other doesn't, or how much do we need for that, you know? So you've gotta deep through all of those different scenarios. Again, not necessarily inside our scope with the charge that you gave us and not inside our scope for making a valid recommendation. So, go ahead.
One of the other things is even as a member on several previous school building facilities is that conception of the majority of committee members may not recognize that when you go to referendum, you can't lump everything together, you can't put your facilities in with your operating, that they have to be two separate kinds of referendum. And so, again, we have to go back and do a lot of communication, a lot of education to understand what that is for even what we are proposing at this point. Because, yes, you currently are under an operational referendum, which may or may not have to go forward and be asked again. You are, with the new school, you will need to have some form of operational referendum in order to support that new school, whatever, you know, configuration it be, you know, if you change anything more than what we would recommend. But I think it's important that we begin to start that dialogue with our community, our school district community. The other thing I wanted to represent or to make sure that people know in the community is, I have been on this, I think it was my third, maybe my fourth, facilities meeting and I found that this particular makeup of the community, and at first it was equally divided, 10 from Cottage Grove and 10 from, we did not talk about communities. We talked about school district needs, which was very different in some of the other schools in long-range planning meetings. And I think it's really important that whatever issues that we are hearing now or that you are hearing now, because the ball is gonna be in your court, based on whether you accept this recommendation or not, is to be able to look at things in both communities and address them as school district needs, not Cottage Grove, not Winona. Because I felt so positive in these meetings that we had that we were looking at district needs.
Okay. The last thing that we talked about was the renovations and deciding how that was going. We originally looked through all of the different options under that $20.4 million, but as we started getting to the end of our deliberations and discussions, the fact that we don't know the exact cost of what the school will ultimately be, it's not necessarily our point or place to prioritize that list because depending on how much funds you've got available, some things may move up and down that list and that will be an ongoing thing as the construction progress goes. And so we didn't wanna put forward a list that could be out there for people to say and say, well, why did this get moved down? Why did that get moved down? That wasn't our decision to make, I would feel. So that's gonna be one of those things that as you go through this process and if a referendum moves forward, you probably won't get to decide that until halfway through the project till you have some better idea of what costs are gonna be and things like that. So it's just something to keep on the back of your radar. So that's kind of our presentation. I guess if you've got any questions for us before we turn it over to Dan, I know he's got some more things to add, but I think, you wanna go to questions now, Dan?
Yeah.
Questions? Dean?
One of the considerations I'll have as a board member is the impact on operating costs of your recommendations, so that's separate from the usual operating costs because there's some things that are, looks like building, but they're implicit, there's gotta be custodians, there's gotta be, there's gotta be a lot of things going on. Did the committee at all take a look at the operating costs of each of these recommendations or just the potential construction costs? I realize that we have a classroom, you're gonna have a teacher.
Yeah, we looked at both, Dean.
We were given a book about that.
Yeah, Jared gave us a rough estimate based on the size of the school and what you would typically need inside that school. We talked about it, but again, we didn't feel that that was our place to decide how that was gonna go. We did look at what the impact would be and how that relates to the $57 million versus where we started at with the full list of $87 million and, you know, what's that total and is that total something that, you know, most people can, with stomach, we'll call it, and support? So, you know, that was a big discussion point on what that cost is gonna do and what's gonna happen to that cost and where it's gonna come from.
Having been on the board yourself, my concern is that things that have impact on the operating costs, impact how we can attract and retain teachers, which besides the students are most valuable resource and so forth. And some things that appear like, you know, we've tried, appear like they are brand-new and so forth, still create operating costs for us, so that'll be one of my things because we do have operating cost concern.
Yep.
Now, some of that operating cost gets built in with the growth that comes with student aides and that sort of thing.
Yep.
But did you ask those questions at your meeting?
Yeah, Dean, we did. And Jerry, correct me if the numbers are estimates, but I think the range we looked at was somewhere between 850 and 930.
Yes.
And the reason that we're not putting it in our recommendation to what Jason was talking about, our charge is facilities and so a lot of those things that you're talking about are broader than the facilities themselves and those are what have the direct impact on the operational costs. So we didn't feel like it was our place to push that forward because that goes to number of the students and how you, are you gonna share it administrator, get in, like all these different things that are really outside of the facilities themselves. But we did consider it and we talked about it a lot with that range, knowing that that range still had a lot of flex area and that was ultimately going to be a board decision.
And what I would recommend, if any of you board members have not seen it or received it, is to make sure from Jared and others so that you can look at this at the same time, this information, at the same time you look at the facility recommendation because you, you know, if you're gonna go to, if we choose to go to referendum, you need to have an operation referendum on the ballot at the same time.
Well, one of the things, I'm glad you're addressing some of the maintenance costs because the maintenance costs, we have a backlog of maintenance costs, which you're addressing.
Yep.
Because every time you have a maintenance cost, it cuts into operational referendum, you know? If you, you know, if you have, you have to replace a boiler or two, that's a teacher or two, you know, and that sort of thing. So those are the things I'm going to, I'm going to be looking at. You know, I'm pleased that some of the things that you left off, the wish, you know, the wish list of the thing you dealt with were high maintenance cost items, I think, too.
And I guess I will speak personally to one of the public comments, is did the committee ever consider going to the full monty, the $82 million or go up to $65 million? We did have discussion and we felt at this time, if you're gonna take a referendum to the public, if you go with things- if you go with thing, well, it's gonna fail, we go with next time. Or it's, it isn't worth the energy and the effort to be able to put a referendum through that you know, deep in your heart, amazed from consultants and others, that it's gonna fail. To get it on the ballot the second time or even a third time gets more difficult. And so, one of the things is to look at, it doesn't solve everything by any means. And I could speak for myself, but I think Jason, that we know there's a lot more issues and concerns out there from the public. But our charge was to look at the current overcrowding, the problems that we're experiencing, the capital maintenance fees, the critical athletic issues, and to be able to say, how can we mitigate this? What can we do going forward, at least for ten years? And we believe it's there for twenty years, right? Because otherwise, if you do the short term, you're always playing catch-up. Because by the time it's built, like we noticed with our previous schools, by the time it was built, we were almost at overcapacity. So, just hearing from the public to saying, make sure that it's expandable, make sure that it will deal with some of these other issues, we felt that we did that. Now, could we do more? It would've been based on what we were given or what we asked and then were given. And I think, I feel very strongly that with the information given and the charge given at this time, this is probably the best recommendation our committee can afford to, with due diligence from both ourselves and the committee, but also the information we got from our consultants and from administration. So, I hope that you can take that into account.
I would just like to summarize the Y fifty seven million, a couple more points. One, while it's not enough to fulfill our full wish list, which was eighty seven million, which was our preliminary recommendation, it is enough to solve our most pressing need, which is what our committee was charged with in terms of addressing enrollment issues. It's dealing with those high, high priority maintenance and capital maintenance needs, and it's leaving some room for renovation. So, while it's not the whole thing and a lot of people in the community say, you should get everything you want, it's enough to solve our current problem. Second thing, we, and I think most of you were there when our partner, Bill, from, I forget the name of his company.
School partnerships.
School partnerships, presented the survey data. And I think one of the most compelling things that he shared is, you know, he said, he asked the question, is the data good? And he, the data is good. With eighteen hundred survey respondents, that gave us a confidence interval of two percent, which is really significant. It's good. And what he shared with us is, in similar school districts, they've done fifty one projects. I, no, they did fifty seven projects. In fifty one of those instances, they recommended that the board proceed with referendum at a certain number. And in fifty of those cases, the board proceeded at the number and it passed. In one case, they recommended the board proceed at twenty five million and the board proceeded at twenty six point eight and it failed. So, to us, that was really telling. And the following surveys, the others that they did, the survey data told them not to proceed. And so, we have to trust our survey data that it's good. We are getting a number of comments that we can continue to address, but we have to know that the guiding information that we got, barring any outside anomalies, which we actually probably will have some, is good. And so, that's where that fifty seven million dollar number came from.
And it's fifty seven flat, because we spent a lot of time talking about whether it's fifty seven five or fifty seven eight, to add the few thousand, hundred thousand dollars to different...
Don't sneak it in there.
Yeah, and we, I mean, it was laid out in the survey at fifty seven flat and that's exactly how we presented it. So, that's why it's our recommendation of that number. So, you know, and to, I'll tack on quick, just as anybody else. But one of the things that we keep talking about is it's not addressed, this may or may not address concerns for the long haul. I think this group's spent an awful lot of time talking about the next twenty years. And we know that in twenty years, things will be completely different. We know in ten years, they'll be completely different from what our projections are gonna be. Because it's just, projections are that, you know, they're projections, so you gotta figure it out. But the fact that we've spent and looked at this as a solution that will get us the next twenty years, without necessarily the high school running into problems in twelve years or having to deal with that at that point, that would be the one hiccup inside this whole new building for the next twenty years, would be a potential high school needing some additional room then. But that's, you know, this really handles everything from elementary, from eighth grade down.
And one of the things for the general public is that all the figures that we were looking at, the enrollment figures, are for residents. It does not include what we consider as open enrollment, because that was really, not only the policy of open enrollment, but what did it mean? And so, we were very clear with all the consultants and all the data, is to say, we wanna know what is the resident student population can be, because that's what we're concerned with. If there's space, you can, the board can decide what they wanna do with an additional space to bring in additional revenue or all those other things. Again, Jason said we pass some of those things over to the board. But clearly, it is resident enrollment that we looked at and helped make some of those decisions. Any other questions?
Anyone else?
I just have one, which is more about your availability. If we do have some more public sessions, is there a sense that some of you might be willing to attend those and help out?
Sure.
Depending on when they are, sure.
Depending on when they are.
Yeah, I think we're, I think the committee is very happy to share. I mean, we spent, I don't know, I was adding it up, twenty, forty, we spent a lot of time.
Right.
And we've gone through a lot of data and I think we're all very happy to share that. We've done some of the other community listening, we're happy to, if we're available, to.
If we're to help the community understand, to support the recommendations, to additional listening sessions, I think either a member of the board that you're willing to do that, I mean, committee, is willing to do that.
Susan?
Yes. One of the questions that we continue to get, and I'm just validating kind of the numbers that you were using, is that when you looked at the capacity grid, you saw that the high school was indicating capacity at what year?
Twelve years.
About twelve years out.
So, twenty thirty, so, right. Because there was a document that was distributed, maybe twenty nine...
So, one of, so one difference, and we talked about this in the, when we were writing the recommendation, some of the charts included open enrollment and some of the charts did not include open enrollment. And I believe that's the disparity, is when you remove the open enrollment, we are fined for at least twelve years.
Yeah.
We should make sure that as those documents are resourced, they're labeled so that that's...
We discussed that, Avery.
And also, should there be additional funds, right, with those potential renovation projects at each school? Is again, looking at what would the high school want, if there were additional funds for them to either expand or to change? And again, a lot may depend on how the learning environments are. Do you need desks and chairs in every, in every classroom, so that you can accommodate those kinds of issues? So, you know, we can't address every future issue. But we did ask the architectural firms and the construction, is that no matter what you do, please always give those options to committees, to the school board and to the superintendent. Because we can't, we cannot have another school that can't be expanded.
I'm gonna add one last thing about the track. So, the other thing that's really compelling about the track is we looked at participation rates for one of the gentleman's comments. We looked at participation rates in high school athletics. And it's important to note that track does have the highest level of participation across the high school. And so, that validated that decision, not only is it in disrepair, but it's serving the most number of students as well.
They don't cut either.
Yeah.
Well.
Susan?
The other thing I would add to that is it's my impression that at the middle school this year, they had a hundred and fifty students out for track. And they had to add significant staffing.
I can't, I don't...
So, we're looking at down below and...
I'm just gonna add one thing from my own, from the, as we talked about, is the final recommendation that you've got here as it's written. We spent, the writing committee spent a lot of, probably fifteen, twenty minutes wordsmithing what unanimous and what consent meant.
And we looked them up.
We did, and it made a big difference on how we phrased it and what we ultimately decided and how it's written. Because we talked about whether or not there was a formal vote. And that wasn't really what our charge was, was to take a vote. The way you wrote it was for there to be consent. And there was consent. I mean, it was a, you know, I would say unanimous, but, you know, if you're sitting here, there's...
There was no, there was no objection spoken.
Exactly, there was nothing stated to the contrary. So, I think that's a important note with nineteen people from both communities, you know?
All right, thank you very much. I wanna thank everyone on the committee for the many long hours of very valuable service that they have done to the, done for the district. And you three, in particular, for coming here tonight and presenting their results. Please continue.
You qualified to do this again now.
Dean, do we have this...
Yes.
Okay. How does people get to that?
Right on the main page where the Facility Advisory Committee is.
Okay.
Top report.
Okay.
It was on the front page.
The next item on the agenda is consideration of acceptance of Facilities Advisory Committee recommendation. Acceptance of the recommendation means what doesn't commit us to anything. It just means that we accept that this is the work of the committee and the conclusions of the committee and recognize that the work that they've done for us. So, I'd like a motion to accept the Facility Advisory's Committee final recommendation as presented. Dean?
So, move.
Second?
Can move in second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Got it.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. The next is the facilities planning timing, timeline.
Jared, are you able to pull the same slides back up? A couple additional ones at the end. There you go. Okay, so just to summarize formally the work before the board and these next steps. Of course, you're gonna have opportunity to have reaction to that recommendation, ample time to discuss amongst yourselves. And then ultimately, you have questions to answer, okay? Do you accept the recommendation for the referendum? If so, again, when, what dollar amount, which projects? Then, once you answer those questions as well, there's a lot of prioritization needs to be done. We've done some preliminary work on some things that we want you to consider, but keep in mind the word preliminary. There's a lot of discussion about exactly which projects we do want to prioritize. And then likewise, again, you know, for the, whoops, lost the page here, you know, for the dollar amounts. The, if you accept the recommendation for the new school, we still have to make the decision about the other two remaining schools and the grade configuration. So, to me, that would be, again, one of the things that we'll address. There's a lot of information you've previously reviewed and discussed. We've had some new information that's come before the committee and we can provide additional. So, that will be a big part of your discussion and decision-making process. And then likewise, as Dean pointed up, out with the recurring operating costs, okay? A lot of discussion about that, about how to handle that, what should the dollar amount be, and so on. And then, of course, if you choose no as far as the referendum, well, then what? Okay, how are we gonna address the needs? And so, the tentative timeline that we've talked about, working backwards, if you do choose to go to referendum in November, we know that the board must, by statute, authorize or approve a resolution by August twenty seventh. And so, that really gives until the middle of August to make a decision what to do. If you choose not to pursue a referendum, of course, then you could continue on as long as you'd like with decision-making. But at least at that point, you need to determine what are you gonna do with facilities. So, we will have it certainly on the board agenda at each one of these regular meetings. I put in in July a potential board workshop, if you believe that you'd like dedicated time just to deal with this. We should consider a workshop then for that discussion. And we can talk and we get the future meeting dates about when that might, you know, be as well. So, along with the board's deliberation as far as what to do, you've heard a lot of reaction about communication. We should talk about that piece as well. Of course, it's critical that everything that you do, we don't require people to come to board meetings to hear information, that we need to communicate that out as well, you know, every step of the way, as well as, you know, the idea and the feedback. We need to talk about that, how and when would be the best, you know, avenue to do those sorts of things. So, I recommend right away at the next board agenda item on the twenty seventh, before we get to that, tonight maybe a little bit of dialogue, even thoughts about key pieces that we might want to, besides discussing the recommendation you heard tonight, are there other pieces of additional information that you'd like brought forward or at least brought up for consideration? Again, you're not gonna solve everything on June twenty seventh, but we need to get a good start on it. And so, we wanna make sure that's a productive discussion to kind of set the tone moving forward, what we're gonna do these next couple of months.
Were we able to get any additional staff input, particularly from the elementary people, on the four K two configuration before school that out?
Yes, we were. Yeah, so our elementary principals did compile that from teachers, we'll make sure we share that out.
And then, do we have a plan to try to have another listening session or something?
We have nothing scheduled at this point, so that would be...
What are your thoughts on that? Do what, what do you think we should do at this point?
Well, certainly, communication, yes, is critical to have. As far as listening sessions, that's really up to the board, is do you believe you need additional information to help you in your decision-making process?
I was personally thinking more informational sessions. And I, I mean, listening to some, some of the concerns have been raised and, because I think we've, a lot of them are things we've talked about quite a bit. And this committee talked about them quite a bit. And I think it's a matter of sharing that and making, you know, hopefully...
Would it be fair if we come back on the twenty seventh with a recommendation with regard to a communication plan? We've been working on that and then share that out on the twenty seventh?
Mm-hmm. I'm just concerned about the timeline.
Right, well, me too, yeah, and some are sorry.
Reaching out, because, yeah, this is, this is a big deal.
Yeah.
We do, we do all the, the community time to comment on this, to get their input into us and to hear them, listen.
Right.
And I'm just worried about the timeline by the middle of August, if we're already into July before we get started.
Okay.
And I'm wondering if there's anything we should do since this, just to speed this up. Susan?
Yes.
I, I agree with that concern a little bit, and when we went forward on the operational referendum, we had sheets of activities that we were intending to take. You're not gonna have this opportunity.
Right, but under...
Oh, well, it wouldn't have fallen.
We will, if you choose to go to referendum from August to November, that same process would occur.
I still wanna know how the community feels about this.
Well, we have the survey information, which is, I thought was pretty comprehensive. But you're right.
The teaching staff continues to say very clearly and loudly that we haven't come to them and talked to them. I know you...
Well, please expand upon that, what, about what?
About the building referendum and the building itself. There's still a strong feeling from the teaching staff that they would like to be able to have input on that.
But what does that mean?
Other than the, of Dan going out to a staff meeting in a building, and they had conversation.
I mean, other than what, whether we build a building or not, or are they talking further down the road when you talk about the design?
I think they're talking more about, well, what they said is about a building.
Well, 'cause they did participate in the survey and we do have, so I'm a little puzzled too.
That is, they, that is not what they're doing.
I mean, I think the concerns I have is that if, if we are going to build a building, they wanna talk about, you know, exactly what that looks like, which I think is something that we would certainly...
Absolutely, so...
I think we're a little...
Yeah, let me fast forward. Should you choose to go to referendum and it pass? Okay, if referendum passes in November, from November till the spring is when the design phase. That's where all the teachers come in for input. We have nothing designed at this point. Right now, we've identified needs, okay, and that's it. We will not spend time doing the design until after, in the next phase. And so, that's where the teacher input would come.
Susan?
Again, I, then I misunderstood that, because that was not what I was hearing. And it would be helpful, Joe or Patty, in your committee, there were at least two members, maybe one, where very clearly said, we want teacher input on this work. Do you have an opinion on, so the point I'm getting now is we wait until we know what we're building before we go out and get that. Do you have a feel for what your committee members were trying to say that night?
You know, I, the way I understood it was that the committee members believed that we need more teacher input to make a decision on the grade configuration. And so, that's why we deferred that out of the recommendation, because we did not have a high level of competence and it was pretty split. And so, that was which we asked at the last meeting for the administration... And so that was which we asked at the last meeting for the administration to get more feedback from the elementary staff in terms of grade configuration. That was how I understood the comments.
We also wanted to be sure that staff were asked and how, and how did they make their, their concepts and their ideas known? And was it in staff meetings with the, with the building principal? And then did the building principal share that with the administration and going forward? Because we really wanted to make sure that teachers, the staff teachers who worked at the schools, had, had some input in, in not only the grade configurations, but going forward and other things. And as Darren mentioned, is you can't ask them how they would like a building to look like, because we don't know whether we're going to do nine or ten or fifty-seven or, you know, whatever. But that they re, re stress that we want to be sure and that we could follow up, that teachers were asked for their opinions and their input. And the superintendent clearly stated that there would be a process for them to involve them.
So, so your thought from your committee from that night was that if we passed a resolution at the August twenty-second board meeting and then went to the staff?
No, it's an ongoing process.
It's an ongoing process. We had really, we wanted to make sure...
That was my impression.
It was going to be an ongoing process all the time and that it, that it has already occurred and that it will continue to, it will continue.
But at different points in the process, there are different sets of questions for them.
Jeff, first.
So realistically, no one's had, had input on the process except for the twenty people on the committee. Because we haven't even really had input on the process except through the survey, which the staff also could have filled out. And they did fill out, right, I mean, realistically, we have, we haven't...
We didn't know the staff responses.
Right, right, there are staff responses. So realistically, nobody but the, the committee has had input, truly had input yet until now. Now, now is when we start with input.
Well, except that even before all of this, there was input came down through teachers to administrators. And then, but I thought, I thought another thing that at least one committee member was asking at the last committee was that whether teachers had had input on what was selected for the priority, priorities for renovation in the buildings. In other words, did they have input into that? And I think Dan's answer was, to the extent that they came through principals, because they, because all the buildings we could do more with and how did we arrive at these? Are these the best ones? And is that, that was my understanding at the time, that, that there was some input. Now, some people may feel they didn't have any, that's always going to, you know, give issue, but...
Going back to what Jeff had, was, is that all we could have always, the, the, the committee could have always done more, okay? There's no doubt about it. We, every committee you work on feels that there are things that we didn't do more. We did try to have within the timeframe that we were given as a committee to do public informational kinds of things. Now, it didn't work out to, to our best advantage because of small turnout, so we can take that. But I think, again, that is something that, that the board and the administration really needs to look at. Because if your community doesn't believe it has little or no input, it will have a huge impact on your referendum. And so this is going forward, the committee can't make any more recommendations or do more because we've already been discharged. So it will be up to, to you as a school board, or Dan making strong recommendations to you to have as many ways that you can hear from the community if you feel that these things haven't been studied. But, you know, you had a committee of twenty people in the beginning and we lost one member, so nineteen, that were presented with the most current information. And I would, would be happy to say that I was surprised that the kind of information we received was very similar in every school referendum. Did every school district do it exactly the same way? No. Did some do it better? Yes. But I said, based on what we have, it's all you can do is analyze it, come up with a recommendation and the rationales for that recommendation, which we hope that, Patty, Jason, I hope that you understand, you understand it now.
I'm not criticizing what you did, I'm just saying, any talk of these people didn't have a voice, these people didn't, is really premature, because really, the way I understand it is, this was a handbook for us now, not written in stone, not written in anything. You guys gave us the information, did the groundwork. And now it's up to us to listen to everybody, come up with our own, have our own discussions with everybody and go off of this.
And I have a, Jason, one more question. I've been in a lot of different kind of groups and one of the unique things I felt that this, our consultants did with us was a variety, a variety of activities, of group activities to kind of drill down. You know, because when I, when I went there, I had my own viewpoint. And having the ability here, and we, we kept switching around. So you didn't have the same work group, you didn't have the same group always listening. You kept on shifting and you had another person getting their viewpoint or listening. And I felt that that was really good. And there were some activities that were very new, you know, to put this practical process to say who's responsible, what would you, what would your community like? And for each of us, we had to go beyond ourselves, we had to say, what would our community and Monona love? What would Carter Grove like? And that was very different. Because it, it forced us not to look at our individual goals, but our district goals.
All right, we need to, we need to sort of develop a timeline. And the question is, what needs to be added? And one thing I'm going to suggest, we do have a workshop coming up on the night, Monday.
Yeah, what's that for this was, I forget.
Tuesday.
Double, strategic planning.
Strategic planning.
If you'd like to switch it to facilities, we could.
Well, I'm, well, I'm wondering if the, what we could do in brief is we could add an item just to talk about, not this issue, but just communicate, the communication plan, what we want to...
It's Tuesday, isn't it?
This is the nineteenth, whatever day of the week that is.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, okay, good.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to, hang on, Jeff, we'll take a recess this side.
Come on, Dan.
So, so we'll do that and if that, we can, if we can wrap up the discussion on the planning? Any other comments? Dean?
I, I would, I would echo that right away, because I, from what I see from today, tonight to August twenty-seventh, is that we need to get some formal and opportunities for formal and informal teacher feedback. We also, we also, I think, need to take our preliminary recommendations out to maybe meetings in both, this is my thing, in each community before August twenty-seventh or something like that. And, you know, so I, I think we have more, I think we have more, not just internal group, but we also have our own communications plan, however it might be limited, between now and the twenty-seventh too.
So what I'd like you to do then, we'll talk about this on the nineteenth briefly, I think. And if you can think about precisely what you think we need to do between now and August, when we make the decision, what the board, additional information we need.
Okay, ask one final clarification comment, I'll keep it really brief. Okay, just again about the, the input. Keep in mind, in two thousand fifteen, when we had the original Long Range Facilities Planning Committee, that had community members, board members, teachers, that's where all the initial work was done to identify needs. Okay, so there was all kinds of input there to identify the maintenance means, the renovation. All we've done is slightly refined those this time around. And then the FAC had a much narrower focus of solutions based upon that. And so I think Jeff, you described it right. Now, from this point on, there's a whole different set of input.
But Dan, I, I think you're right on that, but on the other hand, there's been two years past. And I, I think that these things, these elements need to be brought together closer to the time when we would make our resolution so that we, if nothing more, we've got last-minute feedback and we have some legitimation of involved, both communities and our staff.
All right, thank you, let's take a five-minute recess, please. All right, I'd like to call us back to order. Next is the superintendent's report. Dan?
I'll keep it very brief, we've got obviously a number of other items tonight. I just wanted to share with you one example of professional development opportunities that we have for our teachers this summer. As we know, they are working, many of them, throughout the entire summer. And we have our workshop in strategic planning, we'll talk a little bit more about this. But something we have going on currently, today and tomorrow, we have sixty-five teachers and administrators right here in the building working on our co-planning to, co-serve academy. The folks that we've been working with, with our leadership team, with the Integrated Comprehensive Systems for Equity, Colleen Capper and Elise Futura are facilitating for the group. And so this goes well beyond our service delivery teams that we've had in the past and we're really excited. They had a great first day today and they will be coming back tomorrow. So they'll really be digging into actually looking at lesson plans and how we're, you know, serving students and as a team approach with reg ed teachers, specialists and so on. So we'll get into that much more detail, again, as we talk about strategic planning and goals and so on, you've heard a lot in the past. But really, really pleased, totally voluntary on our teachers' part, sixty-five staff members to be here is pretty incredible, so. And then we have another thirteen teachers that will be attending a two-day academy at the end of June and another sixteen for a three-day academy at the end of July and August. So there's links on there, you can read more of all that information.
Thank you, any questions? All right, moving on to board reports, starting with personnel.
Personnel, it had no meeting since the last session. We, unless, Dan, you want to take up the, is this where we take up the recommendation that came out of the last meeting?
You haven't reported on it on the five twenty-two meeting.
Right, there's a notion to talk about the five twenty-two meeting, May twenty-second.
I'm not prepared to do that.
It was a bargaining session with both the educational assistants and teachers.
Yeah, we, we did, I reported that out.
And I've got a comment more than a question, I guess, which is, one of the reasons I think it's important to be careful with the agenda and, because I didn't happen to have a conflict that night and I always look at those agendas and if there's going to be a meet and confer, I come to the meeting because I want to hear the meet and confer. And there was no meet and confer, agendized for that meeting with the MGA regarding the paras. And I would have, I would have come to hear that conversation if I had known about that. I, when I looked at it, it looked like closed session and exchange of packages with the MGA for teachers. And I thought, well, there's no, nothing to listen to for that, so I didn't come. So I think there is a reason why, you know, we've, we have to agendize everything that's going to be on a meeting's agenda and have to follow the open meeting as well in terms of what's in closed session and what's in open. Those are important and I just want to state that as a reminder.
I, I was under the impression that the paraprofessionals did bring materials to the committee that night.
The paraprofessionals did bring, yes.
And that was what? That was in open, so that's reportable, right?
They did.
I'm, I'm asking you to report that out.
Well, I, yeah, I reported it, we reported that out in a, in a closed session already. You, you're aware of what, everything that I know about that meeting was reported out in a closed session, do you?
I, I'm asking you to report out in open what occurred in open so that the community gets the report of what you received then.
I'll ask the chair, is that inappropriate?
What we received was the pay, was the cells, was a document explaining the, the cells.
Okay.
Right, what we see was, which is the current play, pay schedule with the various cells for the educational assistance. That's a document that's actually, was from the prior year and had been brought around before to us, correct? That was the only document that I, that they brought with us.
I wasn't present, so...
No, you weren't present, sorry, you're right, you weren't present, Nicole and Jared were present. But the document we received was, was a document that had, that listed the various cells and the, and the amounts paid for the, those two lines, which was the educational assistance, which are what, regular ed and special ed, is that what the two lines were?
We, we had, we had, at that meeting, we had a document which was presented, presented by the administration which had several categories of persons that worked with our schools, including the paraprofessionals. And, and, but, but the meeting, but the meeting was with the paraprofessionals. And, and they made a, they made a presentation and a proposal to the, to the committee to create a, the matrix had six cells with, for all of the categories. These were cooks and custodians and groundspeople and so forth, and various categories. And, but the paraprofessionals are those who work directly with, with, with students in various, various capacities. We heard individual presentations from probably, what, four, maybe five of, of those? And the, the administration proposal was to, was to put the, was basically to put the money on the starting salaries fundamentally and not to create a seven cell. And the committee, after hearing and talking to them and listening to them, decided that their work was significantly different from the work of, of the other types, that we'd create a separate salary schedule and create a seven cell and, and put the proposed funds on that seven cell. And that was, that was voted by, voted on by the committee and, which was contrary to the administrative recommendation. Is that a fair?
The, the cells that Dean was talking about were, you know, two range cells, range two, which is regular ed, range three, which is special ed paraprofessionals. We were just talking about those two specific cells, not range one, which is school nutrition assistant, range four custodian administrative assistant, range five grounds, range six head custodian. We're specifically talking about those.
And this, and this wasn't a new document. This is a document that, that was, you know, the year before, it said the years before cells on it and was just, and we had seen this before, seen these cells before. In fact, it's in our, it is in our, where is, where is that published? Is that in the handbook or is that...
It's just the support staff compensation plan.
Just a support staff compensation.
It was seen, but the, but Susan doesn't, didn't know when we discussed the cell seven part of adding.
Yeah, but that was not on the document. Susan?
I think I, I think I explained that, that it was not on the cell seven that we added.
And I want to clarify then, so I'm looking a way to fix this. So that discussion was not agendized. Is that correct? It was not on the agenda. The agenda very clearly said negotiation, which by law is base wage only, correct?
Bargaining strategy, paraprofessional base wage and negotiations, section D.
Right, which would be by Act ten, base wage only. So normally, when I was on the personnel, personnel committee and I enjoyed that committee here much and would select to be on it, I still think that would be helpful. When, we would do those, that process in a meet and confer session so that they would talk to us and then we would go into closed and have a discussion and then we would come back and talk to them. It's also my impression that when you came out of closed session, there was no discussion on that item in open. Even though, so the cell seven is supplemental.
Correct.
And that is by law not allowed to be negotiated. And that will...
Is the, is the cell seven supplemental? It, is the, is the cell seven supplemental, um, because it, if it, it can be, we can
Yeah, I, yeah.
Arrange, you know, that two-point-one, we're allowed to, um, the base wage is two-point-one.
So what we were bargaining is a one-point-two-six percent of the base wage.
One-point-two, two-six, and that could all be distribut- distributed in a cell seven.
That's true.
There is nothing that stops us from doing that.
However, these cells are not that, these include supplemental, and that's, that's the point.
Well, what I'd like to do is kind of fix that.
Okay.
So, um, one of the things that I'd like to suggest, based on the committee report, is that the committee goes back and schedules a meet and confer on the cell seven issue so it can be done in an open session, the way the law requires. You can come out and have that discussion with the paraprofessionals rather than come out and say, we can't discuss it, which was also illegal. Um, and we can get back on track in terms of legal considerations that the board should be following in terms of the agenda and, and collective bargaining. And I think it's important for them to be able to hear, so technically you weren't supposed to have a discussion about it, but you did because you reported that out, for them to be able to hear what you discussed, and you can't take an action, a committee action in that meeting, and we need that to be able to act on it.
Shouldn't we move this to, shouldn't we, since we are in discussion, shouldn't we continue with the board reports and move this to the public action items?
Yes, we could, um, yes.
And then reopen the-
Reopen it, absolutely. Um, basically, I guess I'm putting it to the committee to try and find out why you did what you did.
I mean, just one-
We did what we did, we don't have to find out.
Hang on, just, just a moment, as I recall, the kind of, the, um, as I recall, we're talking about cell seven in open, the, um, uh, because we, we talked about that in open, the, um, we are also allowed to go into closed session to discuss the strategy for, you know, uh, for the supplemental.
No, you're not-
No, we're not, I don't know, only the strategy for negotiation, that's, that is correct.
I'm happy to read this to you.
Yeah, it's all right, you don't have to read anything, you don't have to read anything.
Limit the rhetoric.
Susan, Susan, you don't have the floor, you haven't read guys' floor, right? That's, that's, that's correct, we can't, um, we can't discuss the supplemental in, uh, closed-
Point to the board for closed session.
That's an issue, but we can't, but as I recall, we discussed it with the teachers in an open session.
Which you weren't agendized for.
Yeah, that's, that could be, that could be an issue. Okay, um, we will, when we get to the item, we should talk about this.
Just leave it.
So I, I want to make, can I clarify something, Peter?
Yep.
About regarding this committee. So I, I did raise the same question, if we were, um, able to discuss and vote at this, because I was not sure when we were at that meeting. And from my understanding, with people at that meeting, we were able to carry on, but I did bring up that question, um, at the meeting, so I just wanted to state that, because I wasn't sure. And I also brought up the question of the Act ten and the base wage and the percentage, and asked if I asked Jared for clarification, and then he clarified how they were, um, accounting for that, so that it was indeed would fall into the legalities of Act ten, so I just want to clarify that.
But you voted.
Well, yes.
Can I just add one more question?
Yes, Susan.
I think it, it is a little confusing in this case, because this is the first year, because it's the current, it's for the current school year, and it's the first year this cell structure's been used, and it was used, you know, we dealt with the other paraprofessional salaries last fall, so it's been a long time since we've all looked at it, and it is a combination of base wage and supplemental, so it just makes it more challenging to deal with, and after this year, it won't be as much of a challenge, but, so I can see why there was possibly some confusion about it in close, but-
Can I make a motion to put Dean in jail?
No.
But, yeah, we should, I think, I'm agreeing with moving on and dealing with it when we get to the bottom.
All right, Dean, are you-
Can you just explain what happened, where is it at now?
Uh, we're not done yet, we'll, we'll, wait for, wait for two more items, two more, three more.
Okay, Eric, you wanted the legislative-
Uh, this'll be real quick, yeah, so I attended the blue ribbon school funding, uh, hearing at CAPLA, did not testify because I do not feel like I understood the funding I do now. Um, and I'll just, uh, really go over a summary, uh, the, the commissioners' co-chairs, skate rep, Joel Kitchens, and Luther Olson mapped out the committee's next step after a closed hearing, and they plan to meet individually with each member of the commission over the next couple of months, accompanied by staff from the nonpartisan Legislative Fiscal Bureau. Together, they're going to get over what each member believes needs to be done to reform school funding, and then work to draft proposals. The commission will then come together once more as a group to finalize its proposal before making its recommendations to Governor Walker and the legislature. Um, the big issue was that Wisconsin is the only state in America that uses a hundred percent program-based funding model, which was developed in the nineteen nineties, and it does not, in the nineties, we did not have the revenue caps and, and those restrictions that we have now. The majority of these states use a student-based funding formula, and I did, I, uh, I think Dan put that report on, I, I got a report from Edville, which is a really great, uh, website that kind of, um, makes it easy to understand, but, but in short, our state, with the program-based formula, does not use a base per student amount, um, for the basis of its funding. We compare it to a student-based funding formula like Minnesota, they always have a base amount per student, six thousand one hundred eighty-eight dollars for Minnesota, and this is how that can affect students. Um, usually, services in Wisconsin for low-income students, students in bilingual education, students with disabilities, students identified as gifted and talented, students who enrolled in career technical education programs, and students in sparsely populated districts are funded through program-specific allocations, opposed to having that base formula and then adjusting based on student needs in those categories, like Minnesota does. So I did, it, it was really, um, interesting to see that Wisconsin, there are a couple of states that use a hybrid formula, but Wisconsin is the only state that uses an old program-based formula. I do anticipate after, you know, attending the meeting, that they, they probably are going to really seriously look at moving to a hybrid program, student-based formula, or at least have a discussion about it. The big problem with Wisconsin is I think we have such great teachers that we do more with less, we still rank in the top ten, uh, with our student outcomes, especially ACT and graduation rates. So, using a program-based formula, they want to be really cautious about making a change when we are already very successful with that formula, even though it's very challenging for those groups of students that are listening, so.
Susan?
I, I would just add that superintendent, state superintendent Evers has proposed in his fair funding formula for the last, at least, two or three times that he's made this proposal, it includes a student-based. I think his was lower, it was a three thousand dollars per student, and then, so it was going to be a hybrid, but he started with that, and of course, he's gotten nowhere, so I'm happy with, perhaps, somebody who's listening, a little bit, we'll see.
Yeah, and I think once, once you, you see that, you know, that we're using a system that's, you know, twenty, thirty, almost thirty-five years old, and all the political change that we have, you know, in those thirty-five years, it just really doesn't make sense to continue using that system, uh, from the nineteen ninety-two.
Well, and even the program-based, the fact that special ed is now inherently low, twenty-six percent of reimbursement is ridiculous, so, so, yeah, I'm hope, I hope this goes somewhere.
I do too. It seemed, it seemed positive, uh, even Senator Darling was, was very interested, you know, I mean, there's both sides that were, were, could see that this potentially is something that they really seriously need to change, so.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Susan?
Can I, Eric, um, just if it kind of comes across your plate, um, it's my impression that they appointed the, the Legislative, uh, Study Committee, reference committee, the dyslexia.
Oh, did they appoint it?
That's my impression.
Okay. I put my name into it, but I didn't hear back yet.
I know, I know, so did several other people. It looked like they disappointed, uh, there was no one I knew, there wasn't a superintendent in there.
Okay.
But, again, if, if that runs across, and, just because it would be nice to stay in the form now, yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay. Dean?
Peter, what is the action on our personnel committee recommendation on the, uh?
We'll get to that next. That's coming next. Um, if we're done with the legislative report, uh, possible action items, twenty seventeen eighteen collective bargaining agreement with MGA educational assistance.
Okay, so, base wage, um, collective bargaining agreement for seventeen eighteen has been ratified by the educational assistance, so we're recommending approval or ratification by the board this evening. That document is attached.
Susan?
I move approval of the, um, educational assistant master agreement, two thousand seventeen eighteen as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item two, twenty-seven eighteen, twenty seventeen eighteen educational assistance supplemental pay. Susan?
Peter, I'd like to move to postpone consideration of this item until it can be recommended by the personnel committee in an appropriately noticed meeting. I, I'd really like it to still be timely, because I think we really need to do this and move forward on this, but I wanted to just clean the slate and do it the right way.
Any other?
Um, since you made a motion, I'll second.
Did you make a motion?
Before we continue to talk about it, yeah, that was a motion.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, this one is a motion.
The motion was to postpone consideration of this item until it can be recommended by the personnel committee in an appropriately noticed meeting.
Okay, uh, motion postponed has been, uh, moved and seconded, um, and restated by the chairs, any discussion? Susan?
And I would just say I'm supportive of the plan, I just think it needs to be done in the correct format, and that, that's my concern. Um, I had originally thought maybe you guys could meet real quickly before the meeting on the nineteenth, but now that we're thrown in the communication thing that matters, and I know how early, early you can get here, because it's almost a pro forma meeting, but it just, um, clears up any questionable activity, or, you know, makes it, makes it very clean and, yeah, and it would be easy enough to do, and then we could approve it at our next board meeting.
Yep.
Whatever would be.
Mm-hmm, the, whatever the-
That was, that was kind of the thought, I think.
Twenty, whatever it is.
So this-
The twenty-seventh.
I'm confused. The problem is steps, you had step seven, which isn't base wage.
No, no, the problem is that the, there was a discussion about, um, about step seven, which wasn't open, which wasn't, wasn't properly noticed.
But it, it, space wages, for some people, right? Are there people that are going to hit step seven?
It includes supplemental.
The issue is, you know, you could, you could argue that we're putting all of the, all of the, uh, uh, base wage into that step seven, but, you know, it's, it's, it's more complicated.
Yeah.
Right.
And it's probably not, uh, I mean, I don't think you can, I don't think there's a way to say that that's all base wage, that's, that's sort of realistic.
Just, I'm sorry, Dan, do you have? Just to clarify, you used to prove the collective bargaining agreement that does not contain any steps, so the base wage is done.
Right, so the base wage is not done, right? Oh, yeah, thank you, we just approved it, so, we had to be consistent. Any other comments?
I was just going to say that the problem is that you came back into open session and discussed this whole new cell structure, and then went back into closed again and voted on something that was questionable to be enclosed, so there were two issues, one, it wasn't noticed, two, it was back enclosed. So that, that's the issue, and if we now just bring it on open, do the thing right, then, uh, now this has an issue.
Do you have any comments, Dean?
Well, to my knowledge, we didn't go back into open.
I think we started there.
Which is what you were required to do.
My understanding was you came back, and that's when you told them you weren't going to tell them what you were proposing. So I, you did briefly come back into open.
Couldn't talk about it in a closed, and then, wouldn't talk about it in an open.
We can't bring that to you to vote on?
Yeah.
You can, but you've done it illegally, and if we vote on it, we've done it illegally.
No, well, actually, 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 our action, if we take action tonight here, that actually doesn't, uh, uh, that doesn't create a problem for us, members of this board, as I, as I can see, it doesn't create a problem, because, I mean, there is a problem in the committee, but there is not a problem here for us to take action, because we are properly noticed on this now. Um, however, um, uh-
They did it illegally, so I, I'm following your-
I know, I know.
This was very helpful, your guideline was very helpful.
I know, you don't have to read it to me, I wrote it.
I know, but I'm just, I'm just saying, if you believe the board is still proceeding in a way that's in violation, it's not the board, it was the committee, the board members on the committee. So in protection of them and the rest of the board, if-
Right.
If you take care of it as a committee, we can vote on it on the eighteenth.
I, I agree with what went on at the committee as an issue. I agree, but I don't, I, I do believe that tonight our action would be, this is properly noticed, and there isn't anything that, whether delaying our action tonight doesn't fix what happened in the committee, nor does it incur any additional liability to the board members.
That's not what you said here.
It is.
You said, if you believe the board is still proceeding in a way that's in violation of some-
I know, if you-
You protect yourself from liabilities to crack the problem. I used your language.
Yes, you're right, yeah, no, I'm-
I move we postpone this until the next meeting, and then it says-
I am just saying that in my opinion, what we are trying to do tonight doesn't, doesn't incur additional liability, doesn't, for us, the liability's on the personnel committee.
Except that it's being presented as a recommendation for the personnel committee, so it's kind of-
It, it, it is.
So it's just kind of weird.
Anyway, the mo-
It just seems like it'd be easy to clean it up by-
That's right. The motion, the motion to postpone has been, uh, moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Of postpone, of postponing, all in favor?
Aye.
All, all opposed?
Okay, I'll ask the roll call vote, so we can count the numbers, would you guys vote?
Sure, roll call vote, starting with Dean?
The motion is to postpone.
Postpone, yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
Aye.
No.
No.
Okay, all right.
So now we're clear.
Now we're clean, yes.
Yes.
So that brings us back to the main motion, which is to move approval of the supplemental pay as presented.
I'd like to make a motion to approve supplemental pay as presented.
It's been moved and seconded, um, and though, and I would, I would point out at this point, you can discuss and vote either way on this, it makes no difference in terms of liability.
I'm sorry.
Uh, discussion? What essentially, what essentially the supplemental pay does is, uh, although it distributes an extra, how much, uh, what's the supplemental rate? The original was one point?
Um, some, uh-
The base was-
The base was a one-point-two-six, that would apply to everybody, and depending on where people fell within the salary, it ranged from a minimum of point seven-four.
What was the total percentage?
The total-
In the supplemental, we usually talk-
I did not, I tried to-
The total amount.
I just did the total, it was like a two-point-eight, was a total.
Two-point-eight altogether?
Yep.
So it's, so the supplemental brings, brings the average up to two-point-eight increase?
Yep.
Discussion?
Roll call.
Sure.
Dean starts?
Dean starts. All in favor?
Well, he asked for a roll call.
I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, roll call vote, starting with Dean.
Start with the microphone.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, twenty eighteen nineteen coordinator and dean of students contracts.
So again, yeah, these are one-year contracts that must be renewed annually, and so, um, the compensation was approved last week when we did the non-represented staff, it's the same contract, um, language, just asking for approval.
I'd like a motion for approval of the twenty eighteen nineteen contract for dean of students' contracts as presented.
Motion to approve dean of students' contracts as presented.
It's been moved, and is there a second?
Sorry?
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Uh, support staff compensation plan.
Okay, so this plan was approved a year ago, and we said that we'll annually review it. Um, we brought forth the compensation that was approved at the last meeting, we were not, uh, recommending any changes in the cells, um, and we didn't have this plan as, as a supplementary doc- document, we just approved the actual base wages for all non-represented staff, and with that, we are making one, uh, recommendation for change, and that's simply in range D, in the district office pay ranges on the maximum, so that, um, that will set, that will keep our staff within the range, um, on those base wages. So, um, we recommend approval of this plan with that one adjustment for this school year.
Clarification?
And I didn't say it very well, so a few clarifications.
Who are the support staff?
So this is all non-represented staff, so this would be everyone except for, uh, the educational assistants. So this is all non-represented staff, so this would be everyone except for, uh, the educational assistants.
Yep. Okay, I'd like a motion for, Susan?
Um, oh wait, I'm looking for the wording of the motion, seconded here. Um, I move approval of the two thousand eighteen nineteen support staff compensation plan as presented.
It's been moved, is there a second? Somebody with their second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Thank you, Susan. Uh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Um, all opposed? Now you say it. All opposed?
Opposed.
Yes. Uh, motion carries. Um, next is the, um, employee separation agreement. Um, I'd like a motion for approval of the employee separation agreement as presented. Susan?
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Revised twenty eighteen nineteen, uh, student fee section. This was presented in our last meeting. Any words of wisdom?
So the board actually approved the schedule for next year at the April twenty fifth, one meeting. Um, as we, um, the change that we're presenting tonight is to, um, underschool nutrition fees. Uh, currently, we provide, um, for our students breakfast and lunch. And we have three price structures, a full paid person, uh, students are reduced and a free. And our free and reduced have to fill out an application process that's set by the USDA education guidelines and families that have reduced pay or reduced dollar amounts. Um, currently for breakfast, they pay thirty cents per meal that they have and for lunch, they currently pay point four. Um, based on the, um, fund balance that we have in, um, school nutrition, we are recommending actually, um, zeroing that out for both our free and reduced families. Do not need to pay for a meal in our school districts. Due to the fact that our fund balance is above a three-month operating, uh, we've been able to work with USDA to be able to approve this in addition to us being able to purchase additional, um, equipment to lower that. Um, part of the reason that the district has a, a fairly large fund balance in school nutrition is that, uh, USDA mandates what we have to charge for meals. And we've been able to be pretty efficient within school nutrition and so it's not the goal of the district to set up to make money. Um, however, over the course of the process that we have to follow with the USDA, um, we have collected, uh, more fees. And so being able to turn around and give it to some of our families that might just fall short of that threshold, which is pretty low when you look at, um, standard of living and things that we, um, families have to experience. So we're recommending, um, reducing that to free. It's our family's choi- choice. And so it, and it costs approximately six, six thousand dollars for the, um, school nutrition budget.
Susan?
I move approval of the revised twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen student fee schedule as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion?
I.
Susan?
I would like to add that it's my understanding that food service is doing a great job in terms of financial balance.
Yes.
Unlike in the past when you first came.
You're welcome.
So again, I just wanna go down.
My son pays about half of that budget, so.
Susan?
Um, Ed, I appreciate you bringing that specific proposal forward. I appreciate thinking about it and bringing that. Yeah, very much. Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, rise board policies. Um, I'd like, uh, a motion for, I'd ask for a motion for approval of rise board policies as presented, rather than reading all that out. Susan?
I would like to move approval of the revised board policies as presented in M or seven.
Is there a second?
One second.
It's been moved and seconded. What's the matter with the guy? You don't, she doesn't have to agree with the decisions of her own committee.
Invite well the board members to.
Discussion, Dean?
Uh, Susan, are there any sub- really substantive changes in these policies?
There really aren't. There was, uh, cause I, we, I was thinking that there was, they added a thing about compensation now that board members, there's a sentence in there that talks about how you can refuse your compensation. But I think we already did that. This, this time we just added some other cleanup language. So there really is nothing here that jumps out as being, uh.
These are all keeping up with changing statutory requirements and things like that?
Yes, and some of them are just, um, like the weapons one, for example, it added, um, that, uh, you know, because there's that controversy, and that hasn't actually passed in the legislature yet, that we may not be able to keep guns out of school parking lots, so they just added the language to the extent permitted, cause right now we do. And so it says to the extent permitted by law, so that if, until that changes. It's still prohibited, but if it changes, we'll have to deal with it and post it. It becomes a trespassing issue and, uh, the legislature has not dealt with it. That, that's one that I consider, I consider that issue substant- subs- substantive, but the policy change is not. It's just kind of making the policy work and so it'll fit whatever legal change happens to occur. It's just one example.
The early college credit program is because they changed the law in school options. And so it just, they just deleted that whole policy out. Giving one that operates under the new statute now.
Which is kind of like, we have a new board, right? So it's sort of like going back to what we had before.
Yes.
Nothing else should shake you here.
Okay. Uh, all in favor? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, uh, uh, committee recommendation. Uh, when we left it the last time, um, there was direction, consensus from the board to bring back a, um, stripped down, uh, re- charge recommendation for the creation of a, of a committee. Uh, with the idea that, um, the committee would, uh, proceed in the near future to, um, work with administration and, um, uh, take a look at, um, the situation and the data and, uh, make some recommendations then for, um, uh, plan of action for how they would move, uh, going forward. And, um, uh, and also, uh, for, uh, composition. So the stripped down draft has, uh, um, which Dan thanked, thanked, um, I want to thank Dan for drafting this. It has sort of our, our basic, um, uh, list of things that we sort of expect from all committees with a focus on teaching, learning and equity. And, uh, we've taken out the, um, uh, composition that we saw at the last, uh, uh, meeting and, um, just have the three board members, but, and may include additional members. Um, with the intention, we've had some, some interest from the community. And, uh, but the, but the, what set up the charge, but the charge, let's the committee, uh, take a crack at that. Just, just.
Well, what I'm trying to do is format this, so basically we put this down as board committees and we'll continue to discuss current standing committees. And I just thought if we could just get, just two seconds on that and get that cleaned up. So for instance, um, one of the things we talked about was three members on personnel, which hasn't gone forward. And three members on policy, at which time you did ask if anyone was willing to volunteer. And one of the things Susan and I were talking about is actually inviting, um, particularly the two new board members to come to a policy meeting and kind of see what we do and see how it works. If you don't come, that's fine. You don't have to come. But, um, a- again, a third person makes so much difference. If one, first of all, if, if the two people disagree, you're deadlocked. If you have a third person, the other thing is I couldn't make a meeting. Jeff was still there, so Jeff and Susan were fifteen palms to us that day. I mean, it was absolutely great. Otherwise, with two people, if one can't come, you have to cancel the meeting. So I'm still advocating for three people for those two committees. Understanding you haven't had anybody volun- you have had somebody volunteer for personnel. You haven't had somebody volunteer for, um, policy. But if we could just kind of keep that thought open.
Sure.
If someone is interested, it would be nice to have them.
Okay, um, and I would, I would comment on that on the other things. First of all, I, I absolutely encourage members to attend any committee meetings that they find that they have, they might have interest in. Um, uh, we're going to have another committee, well, hopefully, I'm, my intent, my desire is to have another committee, uh, put together today. Uh, or, you know, in the next couple of weeks and then we're gonna, and then the other thing we're gonna talk about is, uh, in the future is if we'll have a referendum committee. So additional appointments, hopefully we can, we can sort that out in the, in the next week or two, few weeks, depending on how everything else shakes out with this. Thank you very much. Susan?
Um, I was just gonna, kinda, on this description. I like it because I like, um, it's consistent with other committees. It's, it's, um, it says up to three, so, which is the same wording. Also with the, um, community engagement committee, it worked well for that committee to decide how to go about getting other members and just having to deal with it. I like that. Um, I think the first two i- items are broad enough to cover a lot of the kinds of issues that have come up. Without constraining it to specific topics, I like that much better and I think it's all appropriate board work also, which is also key. There's no implementation in here.
Right.
So I, I like it.
Right. Then actually committees are not generally tasked unless we're tasked on specifically with anything relative to, to, um, uh, implementation. Uh, their communication advice. And I think that's actually where this one will primarily serve its purpose. And I think the first pr- most important purpose it needs to serve is a communication one. S- s- to facilitate the insight into the, of the board and the community into the, um, into what all, what we are doing and where we are and where we stand. And I think, I think, um, all the discussions we have has shown to me, more than anything else, that I think we have a communication issue that, and that's the first thing we need to work on and I think this will help. Susan?
Do we, do we have a plan for a meeting? I, again, people, a, a couple of people have asked who were on the committee before because they wanted to kind of get a plan together. You know, they don't know whether they're gonna be asked back or.
No, that's community enga- engagement.
Community engagement, that's different.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I was trying to say that one off before.
We're not there yet.
We're not, we're not there yet, which we, we do need to bring up.
But the person hasn't started yet, so, I mean, that's director, so that makes sense to me that we move that out.
And we'll, let's, and let's deal with this and then let's talk about, for a minute, it's about community engagement. Dean?
Uh, the, the name of the committee, you see it?
Teaching, Learning and Equity Committee.
Okay, and, uh, if, if you had.
Is what's on the proposal.
If you had to put a couple of sentences with that, what, what would be its vision or goal?
It's ready. Oh, you don't have.
Yeah.
That's the, the proposal is, that's in, in board docs and part of what this group decided last week, last meeting was that, I mean, we had a more specific charge. This group decided that what we wanted to do was bring back a stripped down charge, which we have here, and then leave it up to the committee to develop their actions and expand if necessary. So I am not gonna put any sentences on what I view, be- because that's just my view and it's not what the board has asked or directed me to do, um, going forward to, to this point.
Yeah, the rea- the reason I mentioned it is I thought, I thought that the initial definition was narrower than, than what I, what I would envision eventually.
And, and we reached consensus last time that we would broaden this and let the committee work on it.
Okay.
Susan?
Can I move approval of the Teaching, Learning and Equity Committee as presented?
It's been moved and.
I'll second it.
Seconded. Discussion? Oh, good. All in. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Now let's talk about community enga- engagement. Uh, we have a, um, the community engagement committee if we, if we want to talk about it.
Just because there've been a couple of questions from the previous members.
Okay.
I, I plan on doing the same thing, having the same. We just gotta get that going and stuff.
Okay, and.
But we also have this new PR person who will be, will start till July first, so it doesn't.
Right, so the question is, do we wanna, do we wanna do something?
I'll, I'll get it going before then, then we'll get rolling.
Susan?
I actually think it does make sense to wait till she's on board, cause she'll be the main staff person connected and I think you two should have a com- you know, I, I just think that makes sense, so I'm not worried about the fact that.
I wanna get applications and stuff before that.
But you can get it.
Cause I just.
Yeah.
Oh, that'd be nice.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't sort of get into anything meaty.
Joyce has the list of people who said they would possibly.
Right, we'll, we'll just, we'll just get the, get the ball rolling.
Just get the organizational stuff going. I think that's great.
That'd be great. Just because I've gotten that question and I, I said, just send Jeff an email. He'll know.
Nobody has. No one has.
Dean?
Do you envision this committee to be a referendum committee or that would be maybe or maybe not, or?
Um, it's not, I would view them to have different charges and that's something that can be determined later, but I would think that, um, a referendum committee has sort of, has a specific task presented with it. Um, that's a little bit different from this one and people may or may not be interested in it. So it would be my view that we would really wanna consider a separate committee unless they, something different falls out. That'd be my.
I would reiterate that because we've talked about that a little bit at the end, the final days of that community engagement committee and there were people who might wanna serve on that again who weren't necessarily totally on board with it. And I think that there's enough of a broad purpose for that community engagement committee that there should be a different.
I wasn't asking about it.
Right, no, I just, I, but I'd like to voice the opinion right now that I think they should be distinctly separate. You might have a couple of the same people or you might end up having a referendum committee go and talk to the community engagement. That's kind of what we did with facilities. There was no, there was only one person, I think, who overlapped on both of those committees. But at one point we had, uh, we had a combined meeting, so, you know, you can work that stuff out. But I like, I just like the idea of a broad community engagement.
Presumably the people on the referendum committee will support the referendum and that's not necessarily the requirement to be on the community engagement committee.
Correct, that was my point.
Speak for yourself.
That, that would be fundamentally my argument.
Right.
Right.
You could probably assign it to it and they would do a reasonably good job. But I think, uh, a referendum committee should be more targeted and, and the members may be, may be a different mix.
Right.
All right.
I'll be honest, I'll, it's open as a chair. If, if we decide to go to referendum and we have a facilities committee that's spending a year doing, and everything says referendum, if you're on the community engagement thing and you're not for the referendum, you're not really engaging the community the correct way. We would, we like you to engage the community, so.
Some people like to hear dissenting views.
Well, uh, trust me, those people will let us know. I, I have had plenty of people give me dissenting views on numerous things.
All right. Okay. Anything, anything additional, any other directions we wanna go with, on this committee discussion? Next, preliminary budget. The most important thing, we save for, we save the best for last, right, Jerry?
That's right.
I just have a quick question. So how, what are we gonna do about this, the Teaching, Learning Equity? Send you if we wanna be on it?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, let me, so, thank you.
What's our next step there?
Give me input of, of what, if you would like to be on this and what, um, and the rule, if you'd like to chair it, please. I know that everybody, that's been a lot of interest, so, um, uh, I anticipate plenty. Dean?
Well, how, how do you envision that committee with, uh, board members and, and community members perhaps?
I was asked to give this board a stripped down committee charge and, uh, it's, and, and with the, with the thought that that committee would consider that question and answer it and so.
Okay, it's not, it's not built into the charge.
It's not built into the charge.
Okay, good.
Okay. Uh, preliminary budget.
All right. Um, in addition to board docs, I also handed out a hard copy. There's two documents. One's a booklet that's called two thousand eighteen nineteen preliminary budget and then the other one is a one sheet, um, update on the operational referendum spending. Um, we will talk about that last, but we will, um, obviously, so tonight is just this discussion or presentation of the preliminary budgets. We've had a few, um, prior meetings where we discussed a few items that were embedded into the preliminary budget. You had approved the staffing plan, um, earlier on, um, a certified staffing plan, so that's been embedded, uh, embedded into the budget. However, as you know, Eric had mentioned with the funding committee, you know, the district, um, has to follow revenue limits. And really revenue limits pretty much determines how much revenue for the most part, majority of our revenue that we can collect either through, uh, property taxes or through, uh, equalization aid. Uh, over the last couple of years, we've seen a little bit more push in the state budget coming into more, uh, per pupil aid, which is sort of slowly working that way towards, uh, per pupil funding. However, that's something that still is not a formalized process as the, the commission is still working on it. So, um, we're gonna jump right to, uh, page six. Page six talks about, uh, the preliminary enrollment. Obviously, enrollment is a huge, uh, driving force in developing your budgets. And, uh, so what this does is it just gives you, uh, some projections that we are currently at. Um, we, I have decided that it gives you what our current enrollment is as our second, uh, Friday in January and what our projection, um, projected enrollment. The, the difference between what you'll see on this document and what actually gets embedded into our revenue limit, um, is FTE. so this number that you're seeing here, which makes up the 3,547 kids, includes what we've approved for open enrollment, um, but it counts each child as a whole, one student, where our revenue limits break it down on FTE, and it's a three-year road average, so the purposes that we will be using for our budget is a 25, um, FTE resident growth for purposes of revenue calculations. Uh, moving on to page seven.
If your one trick is 25, are you, are you, is that a typical number or high or low?
I don't know if we can necessarily talk about a typical number in this district, for whatever reason, it's very meaty. Um, you know, a couple of years ago, we saw a growth of 90, um, then the following year, we saw a growth of 20, and then we actually saw a negative, so we don't really have a consistent level, and so, I don't want, yeah, so, the thing is, is we could project 50, hopefully we do get 50, that's great for, um, revenue purposes, and it gives us a better idea of where we're at following our enrollment projections. Uh, however, when you project 50 and you only get 25, that definitely sets your budget at a higher level, and then you have to worry about trying to cut back after we've sort of put things in buckets. Um, as a reminder, this is the preliminary budget, so there's a lot of things that are still in movement. On July 1st, we will get our first, um, state aid estimate, or equalization aid, um, so the purposes of budgeting, we've always, or the last couple of years, we've just used what we currently get. Um, typically, that doesn't change how much revenue we get, it just shifts who's responsible for it, if the state's giving us additional or not. Um, we are in the second year of the budget, and we do know that our per pupil aid is going from 400 to $654, um, which gives us some additional revenue to, um, that we can, however, we're also been notified that Title I is decreasing by, you know, just shy of 2%. Our Title II is decreasing by 10%, um, but those are grants, and those are things that we can, um, sort of absorb in our budget, because then we just won't, um, some, not positions, but supplies won't be purchased, or professional development opportunities would be shifted if it was being paid through grants. Uh, so page seven, we start talking about our revenue, uh, limit projections, and the first thing I wanna point out is, um, based on the numbers that we're using, the 25 FTEs, there's a $0 increase for pre-pupil, per pupil. We have embedded the 2.6 million dollar referendum, and just to clarify that for individuals, is the 2.6 goes in, and it doesn't keep building on each year, so it's not 2.6 this year, and the next year we can charge. That 2.6 in the revenue limit, sort of, when we start that calculation, zeros back out, and then we have to add it back in. So, if you do start, as we will talk about later, spins, um, revenue limit money, or, uh, referendum money on reoccurring expenses, that's, once it's in, it's always in, versus if you did one-time expenditure, similar to the fund balance. So you can see here, there are actually four years of history, and then the 2018-19 proposed. Right now, we're projecting an increase in our revenue limit by $511,000 over this current fiscal year, which represents a 1.43%. That's really driven because of our FTE, because our revenue limits are coming in based on, um, enrollments, and you can see that the 12,952 is our estimate that we're using for equalization aid, which is the same as 17-18. Um, so that's telling us that we technically have, uh, $23,345,000, which can be used in Fund X for general operations under revenue limits. Um, as I had mentioned before, if we do find that we're receiving additional state equalization aid, that will just lower that $23,434,000, and it will be shifted to, so they're counterbalancing on numbers. Um, July 1st is, like I said, is just an estimate from DPI, we technically won't get our final numbers until October 15th. Um, and part of that is, is because equalization is based off of a formula, and based off of shared costs, so, um, the estimate from DPI is as good as what, um, business departments report back to DPI, as we make adjustments for our budgets during the fiscal year. Um, another part that, you know, we, um, technically, we, tonight we heard about, um, having the ninth highest mill rates, and, uh, so what really drives that is our valuation, our tax appropriations, and so you can see over, um, the last, there, just like the, the graph, or the chart above, four years of historical data, and then what we're projecting. Uh, we are projecting a 3% increase in, um, values, that doesn't change what we collect from student, or for students, the revenue limits, and what it does is it drives our mill rates for the most part. And when you look at the equalization value, if we increase more, the state says, well, as a district, you have more ability to pay for funding your school through property taxes than you do, uh, for, um, getting additional aid from the state. So, last year, we were at a 2.82%, uh, we do believe we're gonna be closer to that 3%, that number comes out in October 1st for us, so we're just using estimates and, based on what we hear. Um, we do know that the Village of Cottage Grove is in the process of creating three TIPS, those TIPS will lock in the rates, doesn't decrease, we just won't see the growth from those three TIP districts, but that won't affect us until next year, because there's still the creation of that, and the values are being computed as we speak. Uh, so when we look at page eight, the tax levy and mill rates, uh, right now, we are looking at a tax levy increase of 2%, which is really when we start comparing where we are at, um, compared to other school districts, we should be looking at total levy, not necessarily mill rates. Uh, because, for example, we're seeing a 2% increase in our total levy, which is the amount of money that we can collect, uh, but we're actually seeing a decrease, um, in our mill rate, so currently our mill rate was $13.35 per thousand dollars of property. Um, with a 2% increase in our total levy and 3% in property values, we're looking at a potential mill rate of $13.22. So ultimately, what we're seeing is when people get reassessed, you know what, we're getting more, but in the end, they're ultimately paying the same amount as school taxes, unless we have new property coming on that adds to the property, if we're just reassessing, ultimately, we're all still paying the same amount, we just have a higher value and our mill rate lowers, lowers. So, when we look at, um, the projected tax levy, um, I have it broken down by Fund X, Fund 38, Fund 39, and Fund 80. Um, we're looking at that 28,610,000, which I said before, represents a 2%, however, that number is going to fluctuate based on our final numbers that come, start coming in on the third Friday in September, and October 1st, and on October 15th. Uh, moving onto Fund X, our general fund, this is where majority of our funds are, that we operate our schools with. The only other fund that would assist us in doing that is Fund 27, and so, what I can tell you is, we are looking at, currently, our budgets for this year is at $40,692,000 in revenue, uh, we're looking at $41,568. Part of the reason that we're seeing that increase is, if you recall, I said that we're receiving $511,000 in revenue limits, but we're also seeing an increase in our, uh, per pupil aid, which is outside of the revenue limit from 200 to, or for 400 to $654, but we're also seeing some changes in, um, you know, some additional funds that we're receiving from the federal level. Uh, it's broken down by local tax levy, um, other local revenues, which is pretty much our student fees that we collect, and admissions, and lease rental payments that we receive from, you know, the Maywood and, uh, other items that we have. Uh, the Wisconsin inter-district payments is where we find our, um, payments that we might receive from other school districts, majority of that money is through open enrollment that comes in. Um, right now, we use the open enrollment numbers that we currently have, and we say that because even though we're opening up, we don't have a guarantee of those kids coming in. So if we do have additional kids coming in, it does add additional revenue that we can be able to, um, fund other things. But based on what we approved in January, and with, with the students that were leaving, we were netting out as a zero, we weren't going backwards. However, if we continue to monitor, um, enrollment, and we see the enrollment's lower, we might come back and ask for additional, um, open enrollments. Uh, state categorical aid, this is where we have, um, our per pupil, and so you're seeing that significant increase as part of that. Um, transportation aid, which we receive about, you know, $72,000, and we plan that to stay the same. Uh, our common school funds, where we see just over $130,000 of money that has to be spent in libraries for books, um, and equipment in the libraries. The equalization aid, I talked a little bit about, meaning that, we'll find a little bit more about in, on July 1st, what DPI anticipates. Um, and then other state revenue is, there is a portion where individuals have to report their personal property, and they give that to us in computer exempt taxes, and so that's, um, outside of the revenue, and so we anticipate receiving about $935,000 there. Uh, you're seeing a decrease in federal revenue, um, part of that is Title I, and Title II is decreasing, uh, but also we've used, uh, special ed flow-through money to help fund some areas in Fund X, we're shifting that all back to Fund 27 now. So, and that, um, expenditure is also no longer a part of Fund X, so it's all being pushed back to Fund 27, just cleaning up some accounting. And then other revenues is pretty much miscellaneous, Medicare reimbursement, uh, workers' comp reimbursement refunds, and miscellaneous revenue, and we're looking at approximately $120,000 there, to re, to equal our 41,000 budget. Page 10 breaks it out, um, by expenditures, um, we lump our Objects 100 and 200, which are salary and benefits. Uh, you can see, uh, where that comes in, we're anticipating, um, an increase of 7% in health insurance. Uh, pretty much we're maintaining where we're at with staffing, um, then we look through purchase services, and that's, um, pretty much, you know, where our transportation, utilities, and personal services contracts, majority of that money comes from utilities, transportation, and then the district works with teachers on call for subs, and so we pay that through, um, purchase services. Uh, capital, uh, obj, or non-capital objects is originally our consumable supplies, or things that cost less than 300, or $300, um, per item. And then we get into capitalizers, those are our fixed access, you know, uh, more of those higher dollar values. Moving into debt service and insurance, our insurance we're talking about here is property insurance, and liability insurance, and then any lease payments that we might have. The transfer of $4,281 is transferring out of Fund X into Fund 27. Um, as Susan mentioned, we're below 26% and matching for special education, so what we don't receive from federal revenues and state revenues and special education has to be, um, made up by the general funds. And then, um, others, which would be district fees, uh, student fees, or prior year expenditures that invoices didn't make it to the business office in time, and so, um, we have a balanced budget that we're proposing right now, and this is a very high level, we have lots of buckets, be, to the fact that, um, we work through zero-based budgeting, we have ideas where we're at, but we have committees and things like that that are developing work, and as, um, textbooks and, um, individuals work over, the teachers work over the summer for curriculum writing, that will also help, you know, drive some of our costs. So that's Fund X. Um, on page 11, it, it's just pretty much a summary showing you that we have a balanced budget, and, um, the assumptions that were used in the revenues, and the assumptions that were used in the expenditures. Fund 27, which is on page 12, is pretty much, um, very similar to Fund X, broken down by salary benefits, uh, but we anticipate here a $6,548,000 operating budget in Fund 27, and we would be assisted by the state by 1.4 million, and the federal sources by 780,000, which means that that's where that transfer comes in, a 4.2 million dollars to offset that. Uh, page 13 is what we talked about at the last Board meeting, this is our debt, so I'm not gonna walk through this, since we did walk through that before, about 38 in Fund 39. Uh, Fund 50 is school nutrition on page 14, um, it just gives us what we're projecting in, in food sales, uh, what we're gonna receive from the state and state funding, federal funding, uh, but we're anticipating collecting 1.2 million dollars in, uh, total revenues, and, um, our goal is to, um, purchase some new equipment this year, and be able to, um, explore some new fresh food opportunities, so we are, um, recommending a, expenditures that are higher than our revenues. Part of that is to spend down the, um, fund balance that, um, we have in school nutrition, but also to offer other opportunities and learning opportunities for our students. So we're anticipating, uh, $1,306,000 of expenditures in school nutrition. And then on the back page is Fund 80, community service, and I know we've talked a little bit about that, um, but what we're looking at here is, this is a property tax, levy of 445,000, anticipated collecting community service fees, and we collect those through swim, swim lessons, athletic camps, um, some rentals to our auditorium, and we're looking at 590,000, um, for revenues, and we actually, um, are looking at spending $609,000 in expenditures, broken out through salaries, uh, purchase services. Uh, we also have a, a fairly large fund balance in Fund 80, due to the fact that our swim pool has been very successful, and we've been able to offer some summer camps in the athletics, so we're being able to offer some, um, to the whole community at a lower cost than club sports, and, um, been able to see some additional revenue come through that, so, been able to ma- balance that out. And so, um, uses of Fund 80 is, we obviously approved the Director of Communication Engagements, uh, funding of our aquatic center, uh, custodial salaries and benefits associated with the community use of our facilities, so most of the time that is overtime from our, um, maintenance and buildings and grounds for when they have to stay late or come in on a Saturday or Sunday, for specific groups that are, um, renting out our buildings or using it through, um, the facility usage. And also to assist with our funding of the auditorium, so being able to upgrade some certain things, um, that allow, um, outside groups to come in, as I talked about, summer camps, and then currently we have our school resource officers, which we have two, and our community cable personnel and equipment is under this. So that's a very, very quick overview of our, our budget, obviously it's a very important thing, but as additional information comes in, we will continue to update the board on those, um, important items. And obviously, when the board does the approval, there will be a little bit more detail on function, of how it's being spent in instruction versus support services, uh, but right now, we're just looking at big bucket items for objects. So the other sheet that I had said I'd get back to is the 2016 Operational Referendum Update. Um, so as a reminder, that back in, um, April, um, 2006, the, the voters approved, um, an operational funding referendum that actually increased our revenue limit by 2.6 million dollars. If we did not have that 2.6, our, um, revenue limits would be obviously lower than that, and this money is going into Fund X for general funds. And as, just as a reminder, when the board decided to do that, we were looking at a deficit of $852,000. So the first $852,000 of that referendum money is going to fill the deficit areas. And the reason that it's not broken out to the areas below is because the board didn't go through a process to identify what areas would be reduced. We presented a budget saying it was approximately 852,000, um, as a deficit, and so, we're funding that specifically. And then down below, these are the areas over the last couple of years that we've been able to put additional funds into, um, and it's broken down based on what we've communicated with the, the public, um, we've increased curriculum funding by $290,000, and I have been able to list out some very specific items that we've been able to do with that money.
Those are annual figures you're talking about?
Yes, those are annual figures, yep, and, um, technology funding, 198,000, we've been able to increase personnel funding by 550, um, equipment purchases by 185,000, and our facility maintenance funding by 525. And I specifically would like to talk to two of those, um, tonight, is facility maintenance. Um, this is where we talk about our capital, it's not to build a new building, it's really to be able to alleviate some of those high-cost things that we weren't able to fund. We have over, you know, a $40 million budget, and before that, you know, we were at 250, 300,000 dollar capital budgets, and that's not enough to keep up with everything that's going on, so part of this was to be able to increase that by that. And so down below is, uh, the idea is we obviously updated, and put a new science lab in at the high school, um, art room, and then when I talk about window replacement, roof replacement, those were not just that one building, we've been able to supplement our budget to be able to do that by increasing specifically our capital budgets, improvement budget to 600,000, but then under safety improvements, we've been able to pull out safety from specifically the capital improvements and create its own, so we can track that. And when we talk about safety, we've been able to update access stores, been able to update our monitoring systems, and so that's why when you combine, you know, what we've put into the capital budget, I mean, this budget of, and security and safety, we've achieved that 525,000. Those, that one, and then when we talk about personnel, when you put, when you fund additional personnel, that's a reoccurring cost. So, were these other items, we're able to reuse that money on an annual basis, so we've been able to buy new things or do different things on our capital maintenance list. Once we've committed that 550,000 dollars in personnel, that's pretty much in there, and it stays in there, it's not refreshed every single year compared to these other items. And we will continue, we update this... And we will continue, we update this during our annual meeting, but we'll continue to update this as we continue to go along, because I think it's important to share this information out with our community, and it's also on the business services website, so individuals may be able to access that.
Dean?
Tie this in with the, with some kind of a proposed referendum. Have you, it seems like if you had a fair amount of money, we put in, about 2.6 million annually, you've had a certain percentage of it, 20% or something like that, that's gone into maintenance, you know, and that sort of thing. If a, if the referendum recommendations go through, will that amount in the operating expenses for maintenance, do you believe will continue at the same rate, or could some of that money be used for other, say, direct, more direct educational or other expenses?
So obviously, the board has the ability to direct the money where they want, but I would tell you that we would need to continue to keep this money where it's at, and any new money that comes through the facility referendum be directed to those large projects that these are not touching. So for example, like, you know, we need to replace all our piping at Winnicott, which is things that we're not going to get, be able to touch with a $600,000 budget. And when we walk, when we had the original long-range facility committee, and when CG Schmidt walked through the building, if you recall, we had that graph that had immediate needs, two to five-year needs, and five, 10 years, and then beyond. And so with that $14 million that you've recognized, or that has been recommended from the FAC, is identifying projects that we have not been able to do immediately, but fall within that category. By maintaining a $600,000 capital budget, we're going to be able to stay, hopefully stay currents with those other things that are looming that as each year ticks by, those things are coming up.
So what I hear you saying is, is that with regard to maintenance that we use out of the operating budget, that we basically kind of just kept our head above water on that?
Yep.
And that any, anything that we do here on, say, on a referendum, that is, is going to probably maintain some things that we would not be able to do otherwise, is that correct?
Correct.
So it's not, it won't be able to substitute in the operational budget?
So by long, realistically, we cannot reduce this 525, push it into another opportunity. We need to continue to maintain that capital, otherwise, we'll revert back to where we were at prior to the operational referendum.
My comment on this document is that, well, first of all, these are allocations or expenses?
Those are allocations that have went into, and obviously, we've expended, expended those, plus more, but those other extras have come out of our preliminary budgets.
Okay. My, my comment on this document, if we're going to publish it, it should date it, because it says 2016. The thing, I, this is 2016, well, yes, when we pass it, I would like this, I think it should reflect it. This is the status as of 2018, this year, this, this year, so that people can, can understand that. I think it's an important document. We've seen some questions about this, a number of questions about this. How are we spending this money? And I hope that people who have those questions get, take a look at that, so that we can see we're buying switches.
Susan?
Jared, I did go and look at the website, and it is up, and it is there. I kind of agree with Peter that it's hard to see it because it says 2016, and I'm thinking about, I've seen yours down at the senior center. This is really, people ask about this all the time. Is there, can we put a link somewhere, you know, 2018 operate, update for 2016 operational referendum, current spending? So that if somebody comes into the website and they were looking for this, they could find that.
Sure.
I mean, I wouldn't necessarily know to look for this document in a little corner on the business services section. I don't know any other way to do it. I suppose you could ask Katie when she comes up.
She is honest.
But it's a good document, and I, again, I put it out. In fact, if there are way that we could put this out in the Herald, not to embarrass anybody, but again, this is the kind of thing, you know, we just pay for an ad to do. It's, it's a document we want people to see and to know how the money's being spent, and it's in the way that they expected it to be.
Dean?
Are we in, just remind me, is this, is this update year three or four of the referendum?
So this would be year two of it, the budget that, the preliminary budget I presented will enter year three.
Year two.
2017-18, the one that we're currently in, is year two. The preliminary budget that I just talked about is year three.
Is year, year three of that, because I, I think it's, Susan, you know, the original one that we had, we were asked very directly by how are we going to spend this, how are we going to spend that 2.6 million? And remember, we put out certain categories for technology and so forth, and you've maintained, you have ability to maintain that and to report it out, because I think the, I think this is about the third report?
Yes, so it's been, ever since we've had the referendum.
Right, this is the third report, and I, and I would echo Susan's recommendation that, that we get that out as a triennial report, because I think it's been well-received, you know, and with, with, with some preliminary comments on it, that it goes back, and this is, this is an update of what we promised, and here's what we're, here's what we're roughly delivering.
Is triennial every third year or three times a year?
What?
Is triennial every third year or three times a year? Said you wanted this to be a triennial.
Triennial means every third year.
Okay. Biennial can mean either.
That's every two years.
Or every, twice a year. It's a funny one.
You guys.
I just wanted to clarify. All right, any other questions on the budget?
You can talk about that.
We all, we all digested it?
Thank you.
Completely, thank you.
Thanks, Jared.
Future meetings. We have workshop on the 19th, policy committee on the 20th, and our next school board meeting is the 27th. And there's, into July and August on the schedule.
Say those again.
There's a workshop on the 19th, policy committee on the 20th, and the next board meeting's the 27th of this month. There's also a proposal for another workshop, this one would be to talk about facilities on the 11th, but we'll see where we are. It's a date we've got to hold. We also may use the time, because we have to do the superintendent's evaluation sometime this summer, and that might be a good time to kick that off, if we don't have anything else to do.
Yeah, also, we're going to have a board workshop on strategic planning.
That's right.
That's the...
That's the 19th.
I thought you changed that to facilities.
No, we just decided we would add on discussion.
We're going to tack on a discussion about just the timeline for communication for the facilities advisory committee at that time, so that we can get to it. I know.
Do you realize we already don't have enough time to cover the strategic plan?
Yeah.
We ended up doing two workshops for that.
Yes.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
If we're going to get the referendum by the 27th of August?
Yes.
There's going to be quite a few extra meetings?
Yes.
So maybe you should get a list of everybody's vacations, so that we could...
That's an excellent idea. If you would, because there could be a full summer, if you have times, if you're going to be out of town this summer at any time, please forward those dates to Joyce.
Awesome.
A little summer. All right, thank you, good suggestion, Jeff. We're not going to go back into closed session, so I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Let's move to the second, it all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
You can't be both for and opposed.
Take it in.
I'm for it again.